Seven oh five, call an emergency order. The location of the fire exit doorway is on either end of the hallway. The A D machine is hanging down the wall directly across from that door. And please silence on salt and thank you. Of course, they take your roll call when you see it. Take your time.
Carol Lotte.
Here.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Here.
Moni Vahd.
Here.
Eddie H.
Here.
Jonathan Bogdan.
Here. Give them a minute to check the minutes of October twentieth, twenty, twenty-five, eighty minutes, or any objections or direct concerns. If not, I'll send you a plea.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from October twentieth, twenty, twenty-five. Second.
Motion made by Jonathan Bogdan, second by Eddie H. To approve the minutes of October twentieth, twenty, twenty-five, there is two thousand three hundred four.
Carol Lotte.
Epstein.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Epstein.
Moni Vahd.
Hi.
Eddie H.
Hi.
Jonathan Bogdan.
Hi.
Carrie. Okay. We move down the agenda, Andrew Walsh. Do you like to tell the board what you would like to do?
Um, look at this, a special variance. I've, uh, I own a masonry, like general contracting business. And I have trucks and trailers and although, like, have, like, uh, there's nothing that we do on the property that involves, like, the business. It's just a place where I have to store my trucks and trailers. That's really, like, uh, right now is one of the most important parts of it. There was something prior that was involved that was gonna be, um, with the concrete crusher that we had, but we ended up moving that out of the property because it was become troublesome. But we, after the, I had a, um, a cease and desist order on my property and then I went to court and we got A C D and I've been following all, all the other stuff, everything I'm supposed to follow, rule wise. I'm just looking to get that lifted so that I can make improvements on my home. Like, I want to build a barn or something like that, I can get a permit for a fence. Right now, I can't do any of that.
So basically, the crusher was back there on the property?
Well, it's not, and right now, no. My initial goal was to be able to use it there. You know, that, if that's gonna take longer to argue or debate, whatever the case may be, that's fine, but, um, more importantly, right now, again, in the near future, it's more important that I have that cease and desist order lifted. Not able to run the crusher elsewhere at this moment. But my more, more important, I'm worried about getting harassed by trucks and trailers on ten acres of property. And I had everyone around me that's zoning the same way I'm zoning, has the same looking stuff. I'm, oh, no, I'm getting, I'm getting notices and cease and desist orders in the mail. So that's kind of what I'm a little worried about, sir.
So you're actually applying for an accessory use permit?
Yes. Special use permit.
Can you give me that for your new variance?
Uh, the variance.
Yeah.
Well, we're not, we don't know what the terminology, but this is what you...
Well, that's, that's...
Cheryl, we said he can't put a barn up on a building?
Not right now.
On the permit? Because?
Not right now. Because when you have to court.
Oh, okay.
We have to wait till everything else is decided.
Okay.
Yes.
So if, when we get done with this, he can come in and ask for a building permit to put a barn up and then he could store all of his equipment in, uh, in the barn? Okay. And the reason why other people have this stuff is because they're farmers, correct?
Only correct.
Right, so the town cannot do anything about farmers. New York State regulates all farmers. Okay? So the Ag and Market Law runs that. This isn't a farming business, so the town is the authority of this. Okay? Just to clear that up.
Can we show the pictures of the, how they have the equipment of it?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to be, like, argumentative or nothing like that, but there are, there are many places that are not farms. They have the same stuff. I have pictures of them, I think I put them in the file and everything. If you guys want to look at them, if not, I can pass it around. Like, I know, like, I know these people personally, I do, I've done work for them, so I know, I know that they're not farmers. I know they're not registered farms and they have way more equipment than I've ever had on my property. And it's white, right out in the open. So that's, I just want to know what's the difference. You want to see these pictures or not?
Yeah, sure.
That's, 'cause that's, that's, that's not, that's not farms at all, 'cause I, I know the people personally. That's, that's the only reason why I'm saying that. I'm not saying that none of any of them are farmers, I know that. 'Cause I do, I know all the farmers too.
Where, what are, what are these, where are these properties?
Right on Brick School House Road. That, that property, that, that house is, this house right here is Lagoon, right here. This is, um, headed west, four houses west on the south side of the road, same side of the road I am. And this is more on the north side of the road, just saying, just past that. It's, I think this one is actually past Sweden Walker, on Brick School House Road.
Lagoon's are farmers, right? That looks like a yellow bumpy hill in front, right?
As far as I know.
They're not.
Oh, so he's got approval for that?
Oh, yeah, many, many years ago, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I don't, I don't know either.
What my tax is.
I'm trying to, that's what he's trying to do to an accessory use permit, because it's that. He's only granted two in the history of this now. Gravel pit and the gun. That's it. Because the spot zoning, that's what it is. Well, the area is very...
The only...
There's variance, yes.
But I don't... The only kind of grant a use permit is when there's no other use for the property.
Right.
Which is how the gun club...
Right.
Wouldn't exist.
And we told him to the planning board, we told him that we couldn't get, uh...
It's special use permit.
I'm sorry.
You went to the planning board.
We went to the planning board first.
A special use permit.
Right, and that's what we thought this was.
All together, different, then an accessory use permit.
We'll take that.
In the cases that were submitted for a use permit.
Right.
We did all have copies of them, too.
Yep.
All right, right, I agree, but at least this is an actual special use.
There's variance.
It, it needs extra use variance and it's...
This is your first one, this is the planning board. And then, then here's your... Can we use your use fines application? Can we use your use fines application?
Well, I understand the use variance very well. I'm trying to, trying to figure out how it applies to your use. Use variance is very difficult.
Well...
Because we know that the country's a property.
But then what are we supposed to...
Yeah, I guess, what, what, what should we do then? I, I guess, and how, how would you go about that?
I understand your question absolutely and, and what you're proposing.
Yes, we thought...
That's what we said too. See, this, this is the problem, man. This is the problem. Can we get into German so I can get my attorney back here? Would that, can you get into German, please?
Yeah.
Unless, unless you're gonna give him what he's asking for, we don't need an attorney. I mean, we've been going in circles since last, since May.
Right.
Over this, and we're very frustrated and, and I'm sorry if we come off...
That's not right.
Edgy. It, it's just that this has really been difficult and all he wants to, he, all he wants to do is store his equipment on his property.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't what it was on at the beginning.
Yes, it was.
Because you said we were running two legal, we, no, no, stop, no, stop. We were running two legal businesses, so now we had to, we had to get permit, use permit to even have my trucks and trailers on my property. That's what you said.
We didn't even have the pressure until end of July.
You're speaking tongue, Cheryl, this is, this is a big issue. A big issue. Everyone, everyone I talk to rolls their eyes when I talk about you.
Andrew, don't.
Okay, no. We don't, we don't talk like that here in the town courts, okay? So, please have your attorney call me, we'll discuss it, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we let the, the cease and desist order at this point, I mean, nothing's happening?
I, does the judge issue that with the A C D?
No.
Nothing was said about that.
Nothing was said about it at all.
Please have your attorney call me, I'll discuss it with him and then we'll go from there, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, 'cause I, I'm not a lawyer, I can't, you know, we have to go find an attorney, that's what we can't do. I, I mean, I understand your job, I really do.
He's very frustrated, I apologize. The main trouble is that he makes application and made for a special use permit because we were told he was not allowed to keep his equipment on his property where he had. And, um, and so we tried to comply with that. And then in the meantime, he was fortunate enough to get the, the business loaned to buy this piece of equipment at the end of July. By the middle of August, we got a letter saying if we didn't stop operating that machine, that, um, there would be a cease and des, there'd be a cease and desist order if we didn't stop operating that machine, we'd be summoned to court. The same day that that letter came, we got tickets in the mail that he had to appear in court. Now, he really wasn't given an opportunity. I mean, this is what he's very frustrated about. He feels like he's being singled out and, um, and this has been very unfair. And, um, so at that point, he, uh, was making arrangements to move the machine, but in the meantime, we were also told we had to get rid of the piles of concrete, which he brought there himself. It was suggested that, uh, other people had brought the debris to him, but it was debris that he created himself with his jobs. Um, and then he was crushing it up and taking it away to go use in other jobs. And so then this became a big ordeal over this machine. And so he was able to finally make arrangements to move the machine in September. And then, uh, because he said he was gonna do it in September on the twenty-sixth, he couldn't get the truck till the following weekend, he got another set of tickets. And so then we go to court and he's got, he's got like seven tickets. And then he was ticketed for having, uh, a trailer on his property that's on wheels. It, that was not a permanent structure, we shouldn't have put a ticket for that. So John, right, he, uh, A C D'd all the tickets and then we left. And then we were waiting to come here to, to speak to you about... We were told that we had to ask, they had the cease and desist order lifted here, is what our attorney told us.
The zoning board has nothing to do with that.
I know, but you, you will...
What?
The letter came from you.
Saying that I, that the zoning board is gonna lift your cease and...
No, no, saying that there's a cease and desist order, so then we can get lifted.
We, we have nothing to do with it.
Who doesn't, who doesn't?
That's something that I'll discuss with your attorney when you call, okay? And then I will direct the town which way we're going to go.
All right, so in the meantime, for him to be able to continue to comply, he wanted to build a barn so he could put all this stuff inside, but with this order, he can't do anything. He can't put a fence up, he can't put a barn up, so he's really... I, I, like I said, I apologize, but he had no understanding of the level of frustration. He's trying to run a business and, and his hand, with one arm fighting behind his back and he's just... So, all right.
Please have your attorney call me.
And then we'll be on, next month, on, on the zoning board or what are we doing?
Well, it depends on...
I can't answer that, though, you talk to your attorney for that.
Have your attorney call me and we'll discuss it, but I'm, I guess you'll need to come back, um, to the zoning board at some point, whatever we're gonna do. Unless we, we discuss and we lift the cease and desist and he applies for a building permit to get a barn put up and put his stuff in.
Yeah, that's all he wants to do, he's trying to do this in August. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
There'll be other things, we'll do it there.
Okay, now we, now we have, uh...
Now what do we have?
We have a couple of people here, um, they went with generator. Obviously, we did not, unfortunately, we could not receive any emails, so I was unaware that there was no, no application.
Okay, all right.
So we worked it out, she worked it out, and we finally got an application, still out, no. So, if anybody's got an application, I think they do have a, a drawing.
Yep.
I can, I can add the email.
No, yeah, I don't think you can do that.
It shows where the generator is going to be. They are on a lake where there's a six-foot, um, site up there.
But I think we just figured something out, so, so, so this is the good part. The question that I have is, um, I'm right. Let me go back to the nineteen thirties of all the things here. But there is, um, there's a wetlands, you know, because of where we are. And so what I need to know is, does the wetlands, it crosses my property, so we've got the, I call it the swamp. So we have the swamp, which is the wetlands. I have, um, roughly, let's see, a hundred feet of property, there's a road. I have a little bit more, and then there's a line that runs through that says that, that there has, that we have to, um, be conscious of the wetlands. Is that a hundred feet from the swamp or is that a hundred feet from the water?
The water is a different...
Is a different thing, that's what I was saying.
If there's a conservation order developed, permit, the planning board, if you are, if you're not a hundred feet from the water, you have to go to the planning board.
Okay, so let me... If I, this, we, we need to have it figured out. So, this is our property. And it's, it's accurate, this was taken off of the nineteen thirty-four, I think, assessment. So here's the D E C one hundred foot wetlands buffer. So it's, it's this, right? Because this is the limit.
Yes, so this is, are you all on property here?
Yes, this is all on property, thank you. So, and that's, that used to just be, you know, the, the road that went through it. So my question is, with this P B C wetlands buffer, it needs to be a hundred feet from there. So, yeah, we're looking at something to do here.
You'd have to, you have to kind of level the D C, make applications for the D E C.
Well, no, well, this, why? Because...
Because you're on one of those places. We're gonna link those wetlands here.
Well, yeah.
Scott, can you speak on the buffer for wetlands? This is Scott Martin's address.
Oh, hi, Scott.
Not without preparation.
Yeah.
You're, you're back in the recording.
Because there are several other people...
Norman?
Yeah, I have your same thing, boy. All right, so this is seventy-five forty-six, this is, we got, yeah.
Thank you, Scott, sorry to put you on.
So, what I'm proposing is...
Andrew likes to have this.
Powering, I really... I want to be able to...
I'm sure he's gonna like that.
I want to put a generator in there. There are several other places along there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it'll allow me to be home. So, this buffer, this wetlands buffer, right here. Here's where the swamp is, so between the rail and the bridge, here's where the lake is. I'm proposing that we can put it, after we've done a bunch of talking and figuring, so it turned out good. But you didn't receive what you were looking for. I'm looking at someplace in here that would get us those six feet off the property line. Yeah, it's, it's the, the shuttles place. It is, right? So, they're fine.
So we only go by, we only go, we go by the law.
Yeah, but, but I'm wondering, I mean, here's the wetlands for here, right?
I think this is the wetlands for here.
Here.
I think it's for this.
Okay, so...
Not here.
Okay, so I could put it here. It means, so there's two places that we could go. I wanted it to go over here, um, but I needed it to be near the, their property line because my sewer line and my electric and cable all go through there and the line from the cottage to here to the garage and the park. So it would be sitting on top of all of that, unless I could move it six inches, basically. So that was the original reason for the... But if it would save all of this stuff, we would be able to put it here or put it here.
But you could put it there without any merit, couldn't you?
She would have to contact the D E C first.
Well, I don't know about that, yeah.
Yeah, but it's very, yeah. And it would just take, you can see, just a simple look at it to see if it's non-jurisdictional.
Okay. Our other choice would be to put it down here, my sewer is right here, we're out of the...
Right, I, I have the, the explanation.
We can't put it in the...
Where, where does it go, where do you, where do you, huh?
I mean, there are the pens for just to see from here. It is, so this is where it is. And this is how the line runs.
So if you put it here, though, you would save a lot of money on lines.
Yeah.
No, this is not, I mean, I'm...
I mean, I don't have that.
Right.
So my, um...
Which is benefit for you.
The main electric comes in way up here. That's where it always, my cottage. All the switches and...
No, they, you...
The panel ice is right here. This is where the electric comes in. Presently, I have a portable, it's gonna get me through, and I have, um, prison lamps, this is what we install for the children. Um, but it's a portable one, so it's, it's not fixed or anything else. So I was hoping to keep it kind of close to where we have.
The wetlands, where you can place it.
Okay.
To make an application, you can see for, you know?
Yeah.
I can provide you with one person that will be able to help with the most.
Definitely.
And then we have to just figure out where, even attached to the garage, by, it's gotta be five feet from the garage if there are no openings. If there's no openings, then two doors, and then five feet, you can't go eighteen inches to the garage.
Really?
Yes. None of those things are on that side of the garage.
I have a window that's there, but it's... Yep, it can be eighteen inches out of structure.
As long as there's no... And even, even if it's a wire or something that goes into the garage, but around it, it still comes in the ground.
Sure.
Or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, no, there would be a foot toward the front of space and the generator would be fifteen inches out of structure from the front of it, which would leave, uh, just under a foot toward the front of the garage. Toward the back would be twenty-seven inches of space if we were all the way toward the back. Will you say that again? I'm sorry. So the garage is taped into the lobby? Yeah. One side or the other, yeah. Say it, say it again. So toward the front of the garage, if we set it at the front? Yep. It would be, you'd have a foot left of room? Okay. And it was toward the back of the garage, you'd have... Yeah, then we put, okay, sorry. Thank you. Property line?
We've got to know the depth. When you're six feet, you've got to have, you let six feet, seven, seven and a half feet, or you'll look like you're here.
Okay.
The generator. Okay.
Why, trying to get it to cut? So she wouldn't need to get anything along for it?
Yeah.
Well, she would need...
So the D...
See, I understand, yes.
Six feet plus eighteen inches.
Okay. All right. So seven and a half feet.
She's a home graduate, you know?
So she told me math wasn't her strong point.
None of our home graduates is math is her strong point.
All right, so... Somewhere in this area, I still need a D E C, I still have to call, so that's all right. Um, to be able to do what needs to be done, we need to hook up to the main that comes into the... We would have, um, in this area, just because we, we have to make it five and a half feet on either side, right?
Of the sewer.
Of the sewer line, yeah.
I...
It's a network, actually, I just have to figure out the gas and where to put the tank. But the, uh, the tank can be close to the property line.
Six feet?
Six, not six feet.
And everything has to be six feet from property line, the generator you can do it close to.
Really?
If, if you don't have a leak, you can see the doors.
Okay. All right, well, we will...
So I'm, I'm gonna take this, your line...
And we're gonna make the caveat.
I will, I am. What is your email address?
It is T J A M S E L M. You know the name? G L.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, the D is written by the J.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna, I, actually, I will send this out tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So the D, see, and see what they have to say about the wetland button. And then we'll, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it, man. For coming in. Yeah. Thank you so much.
So if you need to sell, but you'll have to come back in December.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay, it's not, it's a connection thing.
Must be, I'm not sure why, it wouldn't, wouldn't forward through, but...
I'm sorry, I'll look on my Facebook.
Thanks for working with us, I appreciate it.
No, you're welcome, we'll come down, sorry to have you down.
Okay, thanks so much. We'll figure out, we'll figure out from the D E C, we'll figure out placement. I'll be talking to you if we do need to come back, we'll have, uh...
We will need to come back.
Okay.
If you don't need a variance, you, variance, you won't be able to, more than like the, um, what we just said. Yeah, I said, yeah, you're in.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks, buddy.
I'll do, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Everybody, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Cheryl, thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
Your properties aren't wide enough to...
I, I can't tell you for sure yet.
So when we push off the D E C, let's try and make it so that it's before the cutoff for, uh, public hearing. And if you do need to come back for a variance, we'll get you into the December meeting.
Okay.
For that, okay?
Is the December meeting, uh, like the second or third Tuesday of the month or is there a date?
Third, third Monday. It'll be December fifteenth. Summer fifteenth.
I'll give you more information too.
Okay. Right, that's December sixteenth, right? Oh, it's a Monday, isn't it?
It's on Christmas, right?
Took care of the Gramkins today, I have no worries, so it's fine.
I can understand that one a hundred percent.
Yeah. My daughter, have you asked me they have twins?
Twice a term.
I hope you can figure it out.
Yeah, well, well, I'll do my best, Charles. Go ahead, we'll get this...
Okay, good, good.
I'll have Jamie Clark in the office. She's so good at conservation work, she's so good in the office.
Okay, all right. That's good. Hold on, I need one more to the left.
Oh, you swear. So we need to find out exactly where. Oh, the main page, we have, the official application is a...
And his attorney told him he would never get a use variance. Because I know he told me that. He said, I'm...
I noticed that.
Oh.
No, I, um, I...
Okay, anything from our lovely legal department?
Just getting ready to go to jury.
Yeah. I'm so jealous.
So, uh. I have nothing. Cheryl? Anything from condemnation?
What's that?
Well, I figured twenty minutes tonight, so I'm over, kind of over checking.
Why are you no business in moving to jury?
So good. Hi.
Hi.